All right, I have five thirty. A call to order the study session for the City of Cherry Hills Village.
I have five thirty. A call to order the study session for the City of Cherry Hills Village. It's Tuesday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Happy New Year, everybody. For the study session, we have a master plan update and Planning Manager Workman. Is that right? You had to lead us off. You have the floor.
You need a minute, Laura? Go ahead. Can you all see your screens? Yep, okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Welcome back from the holiday break. I hope you enjoyed the break and time with family and friends. Yeah, this is a study session intended to provide an update to you all as in terms of the status of the master plan update. At this time, any comments or questions that you have are certainly welcome, but there's nothing for council to decide or give direction on or anything this evening. It's really just to give you all information about where we're at and where we're headed. As you may recall, the city is under contract with RIC Engineering to help us with this master plan update. Our primary point of contact is Britt Palmberg. He's here in attendance this evening and available if you all have questions for him as well. But they bring and they've shown a real breadth of experience in doing this type of work, not only in Colorado, but in several other states throughout the country. Additionally, Rick has a subcontractor, Felsberg Holt Uhlvig, I think is how you say it, F H U. But they're a very well-respected transportation engineering firm, and they're here to help us with issues and questions and things related to transportation. So council may recall in June of last year, you all voted to reauthorize spending funds on the project after a lengthy pause due to the global pandemic. Since that time, the First Citizen Advisory Task Force meeting was held in August. An open house was held in September. A community survey was mailed to over twenty-two hundred property owners in the city in October. That closed in November. We were thrilled to receive over four hundred and sixty responses to that survey. That was far more than we anticipated, which is great. We've also had a second C A T meeting that was held in November. We had a technical advisory group meeting that was held virtually in December. And additionally, we've had study sessions with the Planning and Zoning Commission in September and December to discuss different aspects of our plan. And so you can see on the image here, basically everything between the green bar and the red bar, that's the work that's been done in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. We still have a lot of lifting and a lot of work ahead of us, but it's all good work and exciting work. You'll notice here that kind of this first part, this first stage of it, if you will, has been a lot of listening and listening feedback and asking questions and more of a gathering frame of mind, if you will, where now that a lot of baseline information has been gathered, we'll now turn more towards making recommendations, teasing out more information, kind of a more active language, if you will, role in this. And to kick that off here in January, we'll hold another study session with the Planning and Zoning Commission next week. The week after that, on January twentieth, we'll host a third Citizen Advisory Task Force meeting. Then in February, we'll have another meeting, study session with Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss our next open house, which is tentatively scheduled for late February. We don't have a specific date for that yet, but once we do have that, we'll obviously share that with council and certainly look forward to your attendance. Throughout this kind of initial phase of kind of listening and digesting and all that, something that has been consistently stated by both Planning and Zoning Commission and the Citizen Advisory Task Force is that our current master plan, two thousand and eight version, is a really good baseline, if you will, and is truly an update to that document and not necessarily a comprehensive overhaul of everything. And with that in mind, the two thousand and eight master plan doesn't really have chapters per se. It has more topics that are within the plan. This plan will probably have more distinct chapters, but you can see the list on the left is the topics that are discussed in the two thousand and eight master plan, and then the list on the right is potential chapters that we've initiated discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know why that keeps happening. About making those the chapters for this two thousand twenty-two update. The ones that are in red are the ones that would change, just as an illustration. The Village Center was a pretty significant portion of the two thousand and eight master plan, and by and large, a lot of that's been accomplished. So there'll probably still be some discussion and some things related to the Village Center in the updated version, but there's probably not going to be a solely dedicated chapter to that. In terms of input to date, I do want to, before we jump into the input via the survey and the open house and the technical meetings we've had, I do want to say that these are all tools, as well as this meeting this evening, are tools that Planning and Zoning Commission will use. So it's good to have these variety of approaches and these variety of methods to elicit feedback. Again, it's all stuff that Planning and Zoning Commission will have to sift through and, you know, make some decisions about, but we're excited about the turnout we've had so far. As I mentioned, we had our community survey that opened in late September and closed at the end of November. We mailed those copies. It was just over twenty-two hundred. It was also available online, and like I said, we had over four hundred and sixty responses, which is great. I will say council got a copy of those, of that response information back in December. If you need another copy of it, let me know. I can email it to you. If you've had a chance to look through it, there's a lot of good kind of yes or no or one through five data, but really what we're really excited about is all the responses that people took the time to give us, the written responses. In a lot of ways, those go kind of to the next layer of the question, and so that's really what the consultant and staff have been trying to parse out or categorize or make digestible, right? Because right now, it's just data. We're trying to turn that data into information for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so really, since it's closed, that's been a big effort on our part. Additionally, in September, we had the open house. I know a lot of you were there. There were thirty-six total folks that attended. These pictures in this slide and the next slide are from that open house. The good news for us is that twenty-five of those were folks that were not connected to a board or commission or a task force. So those were folks that otherwise, you know, weren't involved in the process, that took time to come here and spend some time with us and chat with us. We're excited about that. As I mentioned, we've had two meetings with our Citizen Advisory Committee. Our next one is scheduled for a couple of weeks from now. That, just for y'all's reference, that task force is really a sounding board for the Planning and Zoning Commission. You may recall that council appointed the members of the Citizen Advisory Task Force. It's mostly residents of the community, former planning and zoning, former and current Planning and Zoning Commission members, former city council members, including a couple of former mayors. So it's folks that are really, you know, in tune with the city and have some good history. The technical advisory group is comprised mostly of non-residential property owners that have a stake in the community. So think of like churches and schools and country clubs, and the fire district was in attendance and some folks like that, folks that, you know, don't necessarily own a home but have a direct tie to where this community goes in the next twenty, thirty years. Generally, they expressed happiness with generally with the city. A lot of them were very complimentary of the city and the services that we have and their neighbors, and so it was generally pretty positive. They did have some questions, comments, things that they want to discuss that were pretty specific to them that we may or may not get into in the master plan, but by and large, they were supportive. They will continue to be involved in the process, mostly electronically. Once we get to visioning and goal setting and that kind of stuff, they'll have opportunities for input on that as well. So the next set of slides here, I'm not going to go through these line by line, but these are some observations that staff and the consultant have had based on all this feedback we've had. This is not intended to speak on behalf of Planning and Zoning Commission. Obviously, they're still going through the survey results and all that, but these are things that caught our attention or that were repeated in feedback that we received, and you'll see that they're related to the community character, which is a chapter, potential chapter in the updated plan, and so they're organized in those potential chapters. And some of these, you'll see, have a star next to the title. Those are ones that we intend to discuss with the Planning and Zoning Commission about teasing out, getting more information during the second open house, trying to focus in on what the community means by these broad stroke statements like semi-rural and less manicured and quiet. I will say one thing that was interesting to us anyways is there has been some discussion and some feedback related to potential mega mansions and folks acquiring either large or many properties, consolidating them into one property and walling themselves off from the rest of the city. Don't know where that will go yet or if it will go anywhere. That's something we'll need to discuss with planning and zoning. But you'll see in the bottom here, there's kind of that spectrum of, right now, the two thousand and eight master plan talks a lot about a semi-rural character, but doesn't really give a lot of definition or teeth to what that means. And so there's a spectrum there, right, of truly rustic, pastoral, you know, agricultural, but then there's also upscale urban that can still feel semi-rural, and so there's probably a spectrum there, and we'll need to tease out from the public, what do you mean by semi-rural and less quiet or more quiet and less manicured and that kind of stuff, so. In terms of land use, there's not a lot of surprise there. Most folks favored single-family detached housing, low density. There was very little support for any commercial and more opposition to commercial. Interestingly, as part of land use, folks did highlight preserving important view sheds, so that's something we'll want to follow up on. But when we get to the second open house, this is probably more of a topic of affirmation, right? We think we heard this. Do you agree? Yes or no? In terms of transportation, something that's come out of the Citizen Advisory Task Force is this mantra, if you will, of low and slow, whether it's cars, bikes, pads, it's this low and slow concept. Another important topic that the C A T discussed is concerns about bike speeds and behavior, both on the High Line Canal, but also on other city trails and connections and things of that nature. So transportation is probably a topic we'll spend a lot of time discussing with the Planning and Zoning Commission next week and then the C A T the week after that. We are going to have our transportation consultant at both of those meetings, so we'll probably get into more detail on that here in the next few meetings. In terms of parks, trails, and open space, I'll go to the second one. Don't fix what's not broken. Folks really love the park amenities that are here in the village. I will say there's certainly not a majority, but there is some sense for potentially a little more programming in the parks, and I say that to say, not necessarily, you know, lights and ball fields and all that kind of stuff, but maybe on the fringes, something a little more active to engage those that use those parks. In terms of infrastructure and facilities, facilities being either city, well, mostly city-provided facilities, this is one where we feel like we really need to hit with the second open house. Personally, I'm not sure that there was a lot of clarity in what this was trying to get at in terms of the feedback we've gotten, and so I think a lot of folks, this, infrastructure means a lot of things to a lot of different folks, and so this is one I think we're going to need to spend some time on with Planning and Zoning Commission and the C A T and the next open house to really get more dialed in in terms of what folks are interested in in terms of infrastructure. As it relates to facilities, there was very little support in the survey for city-provided facilities like a senior center or a pool or things like that. Here in the village, most of that stuff is privately owned on people's property, and there just hasn't been a big desire to have that be publicly funded or provided by the city, so. And then sustainability, this is one that there's been a lot of momentum for. We internally have kind of coined a phrase of sensible sustainability. What that means, we're not sure yet. We'll need to go back at the second open house and get a little more into details in this, but generally, folks are definitely interested in water conservation and stormwater and composting and recycling. So some next steps, I've alluded to these already, so I'll just run through these quickly. Next week, we have our study session with Planning and Zoning Commission to finish up our discussion on the survey results, as well as get into some visioning and guiding principle discussion. The week after that, we have our C A T meeting, again, probably to discuss a lot of the similar topics, and then beginning of February, we'll have a study session with P N Z to prep for that second open house, and then in late February, we'll have that second open house. So that's my information for the update for you all this evening, but certainly I can answer questions if you have any or if you have any for Britt. He's available as well.
Questions for staff? Council Blum?
I've got one, Paul, and I don't know if it's for you or maybe for Britt, but did the, I know we got four hundred and sixty, maybe some odd responses to the survey. Was the attendance at our open house, or I guess two open houses, was that what you expected? Seems like twenty-six people might be a little, might be low, and I'm just curious if that was what you expected or if it was less than expected.
So I'll invite Britt to share his thoughts as well. In terms of the open house, it was actually more than I had anticipated for a community this size, particularly with, you know, the end, quote, "end" of the high point of the pandemic, getting folks out. You know, if we had gotten twelve to fifteen, I would have been happy, and we got almost double that. So personally, I felt like it was a success, and the feedback that we got, so we had different stations with different boards, and people could put comments on them and that, and those comments that people provided were, the benefit of doing the open house is it's not just a comment in a survey or a comment you put on a board, you can actually talk to people about why they make that comment or what they mean by that comment or things like that. So to have those types of conversations was really beneficial.
And let me just add real quick onto that, there were a lot more than twenty-five folks providing survey results or feedback in that meeting. The twenty-five were just the ones who aren't a P T R C member or who aren't some other, those folks were still, those folks, those other folks that were there who are on a board or commission or whatever, were also providing and providing written responses and post-its and everything else. So we got way more than just twenty-five people's worth of responses.
Might also add that we, original plan was to hold it outdoors over here at the park with the shelter and so forth, have it kind of be an outdoor event, you know, fun outdoors during the fall, and we had rain come in and fairly cold weather, so we had to shift to indoors fairly last minute. That might have impacted the number a bit. But again, I concur with Paul and Chris concerning the number. Hopefully, it'll go up in the future as we have better weather and, you know, more information, more stuff to react to as part of this plan as opposed to general input.
And that's a good point that, just to follow up on what Britt said, is generally those initial open house where you're just doing some information gathering, those tend to be the lesser attended ones. When you really start to present options to people, that they may have an interest in a certain topic going a certain way, you tend to see a higher attendance for those ones as well.
Thank you.
Paul, help us understand, the, you have P N Z, and you have study sessions with P N Z, and then you have the Citizens Advisory Group also in study sessions. Are the agendas the same?
They're generally about the same, but they're not identical because the P N Z, as you know, is charged in the charter with overseeing the master plan and the update to it. The Citizen Advisory Task Force is really a group of citizens that are intended to provide another avenue for public, active public input to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the zoning, there's all but one of the zoning commissioners are on the C A T, and so they're part of the discussion and they hear the discussion, but they're really to advise and help Planning and Zoning Commission through some of this information and these decision points when we get there.
There's no action taken in the C A T meeting?
Strictly advisory.
Yeah, like the Planning and Zoning Commission directs staff on how we do an open house, whereas the C A T doesn't give direction. They can give input to Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's ultimately Planning and Zoning Commission that makes those decisions.
Thank you.
So I think a lot of this information is as expected, and in the photos of the open houses, I saw a lot of familiar faces or backs of heads, as the case might be. Earl, I saw the back of your head in a couple of those. So I guess what I'm wondering is, was there anything unexpected that you saw? I imagine you would have called it out if there was, but was there anything that was different from what you might have expected or, you know, and was it really just the usual suspects or was it totally new people? And maybe that's just an anecdotal piece of information.
So I'll answer the second question first. So obviously, I'm still relatively new to the city, but we had the attendance list for the open house, and we had some of the folks that have been here for a while look at that list, and if memory serves, I think it was about fifty-fifty of folks we would expect to see and folks that their name may be familiar, but they don't generally participate in something. So the mix was kind of what you would expect. In terms of the survey, obviously, we didn't ask for names or addresses or anything like that, so it's a little harder to say, but I will say, I think four hundred and sixty, over four hundred and sixty is well above what we expected, and so in the back, you know, we asked folks, you know, how old they were or what, you know, how many people live in their household, that kind of stuff. I was pleasantly surprised. It skewed towards an older demographic, don't mistake that, but I was pleased with the amount of kind of a younger demographic than we received. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't characterize it as a majority or even a fifty-fifty, but it was more than I had anticipated. And then remind me of the first question?
Was there anything unexpected?
That we didn't expect. I will say, and this is me speaking, so if it doesn't come to fruition, you can blame me. Generally, what we've heard from the C A T, planning and zoning in the community, is we like the village, we like the village the way it is, we're not ready, we don't want a hundred and eighty-degree change on anything. And so that was what we thought we would hear for the most part, and it's what we've heard. And I will say, there are a couple of things on the fringes, like some additional more active things in parks that I wouldn't necessarily say they were a surprise, but it wasn't something we fully expected either. Another one is there were a handful of folks that were open with good regulation and in the right location, some different types of housing. That was a little bit surprising to me, but by and large, most of it was kind of what we thought we would see, which is we have a great community and let's keep it that way.
The other two that I would add to that list that I was personally surprised by, and this is just one person, but I think there was more of a coherent voice regarding the McMansion perception. It still doesn't represent a majority by any stretch, and it's not, you know, a tidal wave, but the number of similar responses on that front, I was surprised. The other one I think that falls into that camp, and from talking to some of you council members, it doesn't sound like you were surprised at all, but just sort of the overall community approach to public art and some of the opposition to that, that is fairly unique to Cherry Hills Village. But it sounds like, I've had that conversation with you guys, you guys all are not surprised by that in the least, so it just was really surprising to me.
Chris, could you elaborate on McMansion and the concern people have of walling themselves in? Did you see that a lot in these surveys?
Again, I don't want to mischaracterize it. It was not a majority tidal wave, anything like that, but there were a handful that expressed some fairly cogent ideas about the impacts of these large, extremely large structures that are so prominent that it in some ways takes away from the village feeling. The turning inwards of people's property and away from the community is really the theme that I heard, and I don't know if you guys have anything else you want to add to that, but.
No, and I agree with Chris. Again, it's not like it was, you know, eighty, twenty people are afraid of this, but there is a recognition that some folks have chosen to purchase multiple lots and accumulate, you know, five, ten, fifteen acres, whatever it might be, and build a twenty thousand square foot house and a five thousand square foot guest house and insulate themselves from the village and chip away at the community sense of being a part or being a resident within the village.
Only thing I'd add is that there were, you know, I agree with everything you all mentioned, Chris and Paul, with regard to the, there's a lot of conversations that kind of cover this concerning acknowledgement of the changing nature of the village. From a notable group of people, again, not the majority, but there was a comment that, well, it's feeling more like Beverly Hills, not Cherry Hills, but there was a certain lamenting to it, but there was not like this pitchfork, so we got to stop this. There was just kind of like an observational type approach, but there was not like a, you know, let's rally the troops and stop this kind of atmosphere either.
Then the only other question I had was, there were a lot of questions in there about traffic and the designs of roads, and obviously, people want, you know, no traffic and everybody to drive five miles an hour. But I thought it was interesting in the survey in particular that there were questions that in my mind were mutually exclusive options. And so just a little more feedback, if you can, about specifically what people, obviously, that's what they want. Did they have any ideas of how they think we should do that?
And I can certainly appreciate that, and that's part of what this next step is, is, okay, we've heard this, here are the options, right? What are your options and what that might mean, right? It might mean some inconvenience getting around the village for village residents, right? Are you willing to accept that? I will also add, for the transportation component, one of the things that we picked up on pretty quick in terms of the survey results is we have a hunch, we, the collective, we have a hunch that depending on where you live in the village, your response to those street questions specifically may be different, and so that's something we want to hone in on, on this kind of next public input round, if you will, is focusing, okay, where do you live in the village and what is, how do you view the streets in that area, right? Because, you know, the northeast part of the city is very different than the southwest part of the city and vice versa, and so that's one of the things we need to get better data on is when we talk to people about streets, where do you live in the village?
Paul, as a follow-up to Katie's question, one of the things they talked about was improvement of perimeter streets. What was the, and that was on your list here, what were they talking about on that?
They being the planning and zoning when they wrote the question? Yeah. My understanding, and I'm going to look at Chris a little bit because those were developed before my time, but my understanding is that, right, we all know Bellevue and Hampden and Clarkston, Happy Canyon are all busy roads, and most of them are C dot roads, and there's not a lot that the city can directly impact on those, but I think it was trying to get an affirmation that we have a role in helping better those But I think it was trying to get an affirmation that we have a role in helping better those roads and those connections and our residents' access to those roads. And so I think the question was more of an affirmation of, we think this is true, do you, the citizens, agree with us? Chris, I'll...
The comments that come to my mind, and I think you're moving in this direction, is keep an eye toward operationalizing the document. In other words, you're guiding not just this council, but other councils. And terms like semi-rural are, in the eyes of the beholder, to some degree. So if we can define and bring that clarity to not just that term, but others, I think that would be very, very useful. Similarly, and I think it's been touched on, but there are conflicting objectives that exist, and the attempt, the success that you guys have in reconciling those, I think also is a lot more valuable than do this and do that, but the two of them conflict. The third point, I didn't really get as much of a sense of this, but we're not an island. And, you know, some of the comments on transportation made some suggestions that we have to think. But I think, I think looking at the ocean that we're floating in, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods and what impacts those are likely to have on our ability to realize the plans, what mitigation might we consider, that sort of thing, I think would be helpful. Sort of look outside as well as inside.
Sure.
But those are the thoughts that you triggered.
And I appreciate that feedback. Just conversationally, so I know, and I don't think I'm stepping on toes, but I know it's important to the Planning and Zoning Commission to really get a handle on semi-rural and what that means in a better sense. Because to your point, it is very much in the eye of the beholder. And so if we're going to say that and we're going to have that in our plan, we should say what we mean by that. And so that, I know that's a goal of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then your point about some feedback may conflict, absolutely. And that's part of what we have to tackle in this next round. The one that I like to use, just because it's the simplest, is folks are in favor of dark skies, and that's great. But the trade-off potentially is security, right, and safety and things of that nature. And so how do we balance those? And so that's kind of this next cut at the onion, if you will, the next layer down of, okay, here's the feedback, here's what that might mean, here's some options, which ones do you prefer, which ones don't you like, or, you know, we'll navigate that as we go. But that's kind of where we're at is, and that's why I started off with, you know, we've been, we, the project team, have been kind of in listening mode in terms of trying to get feedback and asking questions and things like that. And now we transition from listening and taking in that feedback to more of, okay, here's what you've told us, here's what that might mean, which direction do you like?
Of these solutions, yeah. Which, excellent, but good progress. Excellent job.
Counselor, we'll just one other follow-up on your comment about making the plan more operational, especially for city council. One thing that city council might be interested to learn is, some of the conversations we've had with P and Z revolve around implementation of the plan. While we are not a community that's fast-growing and building entire new sections and some things that a typical master plan might have in it, there are still going to be goals and objectives and strategies that are going to be included, and how do we go about implementing those? And so I think compared to the 2008 plan, where there was very little guidance on priority setting, our hope is to, and what P and Z has talked about is trying to put a, you know, a priority one, which might have a two-to-four-year time horizon or one-to-three-year time horizon, priority two, which, you know, three to five years, I'm making numbers up, right? But, you know, low, medium, and high, short, medium, and long, whatever you want to call it, some sort of priority setting so that city council has some guidance about, especially with things that have expenditures to them, what is the priority from a community perspective?
You know, for me, first of all, thank you for sharing the results, the summary. For me, you know, when we talk about things that are a little bit, or the feedback that is a little unexpected, right, the mega mansion. Personally, I'd like to see if it's, you know, 0.001% of the population that said that, or was it 10% of the population said that? Because, to be honest with you, if it's only one or two people in the entire 6,000 people, well, great. You know, you don't like it.
Thank you for your feedback, right?
You know, there is another city you can move to. But if it turns out to be a couple hundred people, I think it's something that, you know, we've got to have a good discussion around that. Because if you look at this mega mansion, we just spent a lot of time talking about it. And is it an issue? Is it not an issue? I don't know. For me, it's an issue if there is a large number of people that come and talk about it. So anyway, that's just my personal feedback on that. But a question, so do we have anything in our codes right now that prevents anybody to buy 10 blocks, tear them down, and build a giant mansion?
We do not currently.
Okay. And that's all. Thank you.
About, just a couple of thoughts that your presentation kind of triggered. One, I want to thank Chris for mentioning priorities, because I think the statute actually requires us, planning and zoning, to talk about priorities too. So I think that's good. I think in the old master plan, we did kind of hire what's more important, what's less important, but not really the kind of priorities about that. And in that thing, I'm thinking of broadband, and I don't know if people were talking about, did you get a lot of complaints about cell service, broadband? Was that a big issue that came out?
In that vein, the two most popular feedback topics we got were related to cell service and undergrounding utility lines.
Right. Okay. The other thing, the mansions, I think, you know, that came up before, and one of the things that really, that may be still there, a lot of old memories, what really upset people were the solid walls. And there are big properties built with solid walls. The council addressed that then with open, you know, open fencing. And so I don't know that people understand that we've changed, we changed in response to very, very specific properties that were built that were walled off like that. So hopefully, that, our code would address that and wouldn't, you know, that wouldn't be an issue. But, you know, I think, you know, that is, I think, what concerns people the most, exactly like how you phrased it, just walling off from the rest of the community, which is not good. For traffic and things, I'd be curious to know, maybe in the next iteration, we talk about 20, Denver just did 20 miles an hour, I think, on their streets, you know? I know that our traffic plan talked about 25 going throughout the community. That would affect ways and go, everything else. So I like that vetted, to see if people, I've heard different, your actions tend to be pretty emphatic when you say that, either one side or the other. So I'd be interested to know how that kind of sorts out. And then cut through traffic also and, you know, and see how, you know, with that. But I think that it seems like the 25 miles per hour thing is one that's kind of, I'd like to know what the sense of the community is when we do that.
I think that's well said, and I think that's going to certainly be part of our next dive into feedback from the public on transportation specifically is speed limits.
Yeah. The other thing that's not as sexy, and I'm not sure that anybody raised it then, is the sewers and the septic tanks, you know? And those, we have those going on and whether...
What was your question?
Sewers. The upgrades of sewer systems and turning them over and getting out of the sanitation sewer business, and also eliminating the septic system, which we still have, a lot of them in old Cherry Hills. And obviously, that's not going to be, people aren't going to be pounding the doors saying, do this, do that. But I think it's, for the planning and zoning, it's very important, it's a priority probably. You know, where it falls, I don't know, but certainly, we've been looking at that for many, many years, and getting that done is a priority. Obviously, the least sexy thing that the city does. It's probably the most important, because if it doesn't work, we're really here about it.
Nothing will motivate folks to call you faster than...
The sewer bubbling up through their thing and not working?
That's right.
Absolutely. I was interested in your conversation with semi-rural. I have to, I didn't need to go back and look at the plan, but I think our master plan, existing one, doesn't say semi-rural. I think it always says low-density residential. Because I remember this being an issue when we did that master plan, and whether we even used those words in the master plan. And I think we punted and we didn't use them. I think we did, when we described what the city was, we described it as low-density residential.
No, I actually don't know the answer to that question specifically off the top of my head. We may not use those words. I think the challenge that P and Z has embraced, though, is that regardless of if it's printed that way, it's certainly used that way. And it's almost weaponized, right? If you've got an outcome that you want to see, you attach that label to it in an effort to advance your cause, even though the opposite side might be able to make the exact same argument. Well, no, no, that's not semi-rural. What we're wanting to do is semi-rural. So I think planning and zoning's goal is to better define, even if it wasn't used in 2008, it's being tossed around.
Exactly. And my recollection is, we didn't use it in 2008 precisely so it wouldn't be weaponized in 2008, because it's so undefined. It's in the eye of the beholder of what that means, and, you know, but low-density residential, I think, said it, and that's what we settled on. So I'd be interested to see what everybody comes up with and what everybody thinks about that. But it is, it is kind of treading, you know, it's a dangerous kind of area to track. That's it. And also, public safety too. I'm not sure that we had a lot of questions about public safety, obviously, that has got to be the top priority for our residents. I don't know that that came through in your...
Yeah, there was a question in the survey about public safety. Generally speaking, as we expected, most folks have very good things to say about our police department and the services that they provide and their responses and things of that nature. And to your point, it is certainly a priority of the community to maintain that level of safety and that level of...
I think if you were to ask people, what's really, really most important to you, they would say the number one thing is public safety.
Sure.
Before road, anything else, actually. So I just want to, you know, it just, that's my sense, anyway.
Yeah, and on that note, I think if we don't have a sense of this now, it would be worth following up. You know, do they want to maintain what we have, or do they feel like we need to be doing a whole lot more? Because I have heard, not a lot, but a few people, you know, who feel that we need, you know, police patrolling every street for speeders, and that would be an expensive proposition. But if the entire, if that's super important to the community, then I think we need to know that and, you know, work on figuring it out.
Sure. And to your point, there were, I mean, there were comments related to that as well, and certainly understandable. And Chris used this, and I think it's well said, is, I think that that's part of what Planning and Zoning Commission has sincerely embraced, is how do we put all these pieces together so that it's reflective of what the community really desires? And I think safety is paramount on that.
In this, excuse me, in this question of prioritization also, I think we have to put price tags with that when we ask the question about priorities. Because, you know, it's nice, if I can get everything...
Sure.
Great. But if this is going to cost me five times as much as this, I might change my mind about which I'd prefer as a higher priority.
Or you may be willing to take a lesser version of something, right?
Yeah, that's also the case. So I think somewhere in there, we've got to come back to the question of, are you willing to pay for it in terms of setting the priorities and establishing them?
I couldn't agree more. I think that's going to be an important component, is not necessarily understanding down to the penny, right? But scale and scope, and that is going to be important in prioritization.
Yep. Paul, you talked about, there are a couple segments that were being pulled out. Village Center being one of them, where they're not, it's just not as relevant moving forward. This is in the 2008, one of the first slides there. Russell's point about something as important, so not urgent, but very important, sewer systems, and it's in the current master plan with the intention of trying to get out of the sewer business, that's going to stay, isn't it? That kind of in the utilities section?
Yeah, the intention is to still have, it would likely land in the infrastructure and facilities chapter somewhere.
Okay.
But my understanding is that's still, as Jay's nodding yes, that's still the city's direction, right?
What does COVID spiking now do to our schedule again? I know we took a long hiatus from this process, and then we ramped it back up, and now we're seeing spikes again. And I'm just curious as to if we have January open houses on the schedule, I believe, or, I don't know. I mean, I know things are happening so fast that what I ask you today, you might answer differently tomorrow than you might answer it differently today. But what are your thoughts on the schedule?
Our goal is to proceed with this project and have it wrapped up by the fall of 2022. Now, if everything shuts down again, obviously, that will impact things. One of the reasons we haven't identified a specific date yet is because we're waiting to see kind of what happens with this COVID stuff. That will help influence that date. It may also help to influence, if we keep it, what format or how that might work. And I'll let Britt get into some of the details if you're interested, but there's potential virtual formats, which can be a mixed bag of results. But our goal right now is to do everything we can following CDC guidelines and the best information out there to keep this project moving. We've got a lot of really good momentum. People now know that this is going on in the community, and I do get frequent phone calls about, hey, what's the next, you know, what's the next move here, you know? When's this going to be adopted and all that kind of stuff? So we have some good momentum now. I would hate to lose that, but we'll respond as we need to if federal and state guidance directs us to.
From a council perspective, I'm going to be asking council later tonight for some potential direction on city council meetings that may cascade down to boards and commissions. The good news is, the next three or two or three things for this process, if needed, it's less than desirable, but if we needed to convert it to a virtual format, the P and Z meetings and the Citizens Advisory Task Force, we could have those virtually. It's the open house in late February, early March, that I think we have some time to adjust to that, depending on where we sit in six weeks.
Oh, so the CAT meeting is, that's what's in January, it's not the open house?
Correct. Yeah, so we could have the C A T meeting virtually, because it's a roster, we could invite folks. It'd be a Zoom.
And just FYI, the last C A T meeting had, was hybrid. It was virtual option and in-person option. We had three or four people attend virtually. And so to Chris's point, we have, next week is Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session, the 20th is the C A T, and then February 8th is the following study session with Planning and Zoning Commission. So my hope is, by that February 8th, Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session, we have more information related to the COVID and the pandemic and that, we'll be able to make a more informed decision about keeping that open house in late February, early March, or pushing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff or our consultant? If not, it looks like it's five, 6:20. We'll take a short break then until 6:30 and start of the regular council meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, I have 6:30, so I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. This is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Roll call members, please.
Counselor Sepavvi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Okay, stand for the pledge.
I would like to say, nations unified, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Audience participation.
Thank you very much. Audience participation. We have one. Jennifer Diffendal, you have the floor, Jennifer. Welcome.
Do you guys want me to keep my mask on, or?
No, you can take it down. We can hear you better.
My kids go to school, so I'll keep it on.
It's up to you.
So we're all good. Can you guys hear me, though?
Kevin?
Okay. Yeah, of course, of course. All right, so Jen Diffendal, 5701 East Stanford Drive. Countless mayor's staff, first and foremost, Happy New Year. I hope the holiday season for each one of you was a time of rest and enjoying time with your families. As you all know, this is a pretty consequential year for our city. Big decisions linger. The most important and consequential decision from this viewpoint for our city is hiring a chief of police. The second, which in the first one, I think we've talked about that at great length. The second one, greatest challenge from this point of view is retention of our full-time employees. It was touched upon by City Manager Kramer in the council meeting on November 16th with the first reading of the 2022 budget, in which it was discussed about merit increases and cost of living increases. Counselor Savabi astutely brought up the rate of inflation, which is around 6.2%, and that was echoed again by Mayor Stewart. I understand we raised the increases from 0.5% to 1.5% at the first reading. And in December, at our last council meeting, at final reading, it was about 2.5%. But that is also still well below the rate of inflation and also below some of the surrounding cities' increases. This is deeply troubling to me and probably to you guys. We are in unprecedented times, and other cities are coming up with retention packages for their full-time employees, and I'm asking us to follow suit. Most recently, on December 20th, the city of Aurora passed a $6 million retention package for their police department. The reasoning behind it was low morale, inflation, and an attrition rate over the past 18 months of 16%. The council responded by funding an $8,000 per officer payment that will be made by two payments in 2022. As I do not agree with the city of Aurora with just the police department, that, like, the pre... I don't agree that you should value one department of a city over another, like City of Aurora has done. I do agree with showing our full-time staff and employees that we have their backs. In hard times, we need to show our city employees that they are invaluable and irreplaceable, and we value all the many hats they wear to keep our city going. The data is clear. Nationally, we are entering the third year of a global pandemic, and unfortunately, we are hitting the worst of it in terms of positivity rates and variance. Inflation from October 2020 to October 2021 is 6.2%. We are watching the mass exodus of workers from our workforce that has been dubbed the Great Resignation. We have to acknowledge that people are reassessing and reevaluating what is really important to them, how much their time is worth. From this point of view, workers across the nation are assessing how much their employer appreciates them. And again, from this perspective, employers need to show how deeply valuable and irreplaceable their employees are to their organizations. Our city is no different. In our police department alone, I know our attrition rate is probably similar to that of Aurora PD in the last 12 to 18 months. I don't believe that has anything to do with leadership or anything like that. I think it has to do with our times of need in this current conditions of the pandemic. And I wonder here, if everyone in this room, if they were being completely honest, our paid full-time staff, how many of you guys have thought in the last 18 months if it's not worth it anymore? So here's the problem that I see. Our city cannot run without the tenured, irreplaceable, cross-trained, full-time staff and employees that day in and day out tirelessly work to keep our city safe and flawlessly functioning day to day. And as we heard in the survey results, the overall sentiment of how the city is functioning from residents was overall very positive. From this viewpoint, that echoes the sentiments that we cannot afford to lose one staff or employee who may be feeling the burnout, exhaustion, and fatigue that most people are feeling at this point in the pandemic. It's only human. The solution, I have volunteered my time with the city long enough to know better than to ask you to amend a budget you just approved the last meeting. I won't even look up to avoid any involuntary eye rolls if I were to ask of that. But I am asking this. My time most likely volunteering with the police department will end when we hire a new chief of police. But I want to offer our council and our city, my expertise and sales, to fundraise for the city to pay all full-time employees of our city a one-time payment of $5,000 per full-time employee in 2022. All I need from the council is approval, a spot and an office in this building, a directory of all the residents, a computer, and a bank account that the city can set up to receive donations on behalf of the residents. I am willing to volunteer my time to show our staff and employees that they are deeply appreciated, valued, and irreplaceable. And one thing that I will say is that Jessica's not here. But what led me to this is when you ask people what they do for the city, cross-training is so important. And the Jessicas of the world, I can't even tell you what she does because she has worn so many hats. And the Lauras, and we have so much tenure here, and it would be a shame to lose it. And as a resident, I would love, I have the time, I would love to stand up and say, I think this is really important, and let's do something about it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much for your comments, and we will be following up if we can call you and talk offline. Next, reports from city boards, commissions, and committees. Apparently not. Consent agenda, I understand, is there any item wished to be removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, remove the minutes for both Katie and myself, and both this one and the GID meeting, too.
Okay.
So that's 6A, and then we'll do a GID later.
6A, okay.
So I, anybody, anything else?
I move to approve consent agenda items 6, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes, I take it that's because you weren't here? Is that right? Correct? Who wasn't? So...
I wasn't here and I was.
So Counselor Blum and Counselor Brown are not here. So I'll take a motion from someone else who was here to approve those minutes.
I'll move to approve item 6A, the minutes of the December 8, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so those are approved. Those are approved with Brown and Blum not voting. Next, item eight, unfinished business. Roll call, this is a roll call vote. Council Bill 17, Series 2021, declaring the organization of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District. And this is a second and final reading, and Clerk Gillespie, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. We are once again revisiting our newest GID. This is second reading. Just for some background, here's a map of the GID, and we are, this council bill will declare the GID organized per state statute. First reading was passed on December 8th, 2021. There have been no changes since first reading, and staff is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, I'll take the motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 17, Series 2021?
Yes, 21. It'll be ordinance 1, 2022, but it was...
Declaring, yeah, declaring the organization of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District on second and final reading.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Savabi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next up, item nine, which is new business, and this will involve five roll call votes. And this is Council Bills 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of Series 2022, a way to start the year. Amending Chapters 2, 16, 17, 18, and 20 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code. This is on first reading, so we're only deciding here, of course, whether there's enough to go forward with second reading, because this will amend our code. So Mr. Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We thought we'd start out the year with everybody's favorite subject, code amendments. Council may remember that there was a study session on June 15th of last year to conceptually discuss these amendments. Generally, after that discussion, council was in support of these amendments. At the December 14th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they discussed these amendments and have recommended approval of these amendments. And then, as discussed at both study sessions, these amendments are intended to be clarifications or create consistency within the code or provide additional information where it's beneficial. Maintaining the code language on a consistent basis is not only responsible code management, but it also ensures a built environment that reflects the desires of the community. The city attorney has been heavily involved in the drafting of this language, and we believe it has her thumbs up. There you go. Unlike land use cases, this, the meeting this evening is legislative and not quasi-judicial. Just a distinction for you all, if there are folks or folk that wish to speak on the matter. That's it. For ease of going through this, this slide is really intended, and it's similar to how it was presented in your packet this evening. One of the things I'd be particularly interested in is if you have feedback on whether or not you like this format or you prefer a different format as a group, that would be helpful, as we will bring not only housekeeping amendments, but larger, meatier topics before you for amendments in the future. But generally, you'll see each slide has the proposed amendment number, followed by which council bill it is, and then Series 2022. Just generally speaking, Council Bill 1 is Chapter 2. Council Bill 2 is Chapter 16. Council Bill 3 is Chapter 17. Council Bill 4 is Chapter 18, and Council Bill 5 is Chapter 20. And that's how they'll be presented this evening. If you're interested, the tables generally identify the issue, what the proposed update is, and then the rationale or intent of that. And then below that, you'll see the revised section in italics. Those words that are to be removed are strike through, and those that are to be added will be underlined. So the first one is Council Bill 1 from Series 2022. It is to essentially give authority back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to implement the provisions of Chapter 20. Prior to the code modernization, wireless communication facility regulations were in Chapter 16. Those were taken out and made Chapter 20 in the code modernization, and this section of the municipal code was not updated to reflect that. So this is just giving them the authority to be involved in those cases that they already had the authority to.
Hey, Paul, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Mayor, I've got a question for you, I guess. I heard you say that tonight is just going to be to determine whether or not this has enough merit to be heard at second reading.
And also for any amendments. I mean, so if there's anything that we want changed...
Okay, so we are going to discuss all these, if I've got comments, tonight's the night, we're not waiting until...
And it doesn't have to be an exact comment, it can simply be, hey, you know, I move that we direct council to look at this issue or this change, and to come up with language for it for the next meeting. So we don't have to wordsmith tonight, but yes, a motion directing the staff to do a certain change or addition is perfectly appropriate right now.
Yes, please, and jump in while, if you have a question or comment or whatever, on that specific proposed amendment, please jump in at that time. Don't feel obligated to wait to the end if we do that.
Okay, then I do have one quick kind of global question about the table in front of us and subsequent tables. You've got these footnotes, and maybe it's said it somewhere, but these footnotes do not apply to... Footnote 1 and 2 are not mentioned anywhere in the table itself. So you've got some footnotes that I think reference back to the original underlying text that aren't applicable to the text that's showing in here. Does that make sense? Just so I'm clear, not all these footnotes are pertinent to what we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, please continue. Thank you.
And just for further clarification, just for clarity within the presentation, some of the tables will have all of the notes, and some of the tables will just have what's being amended. And I'll do my best to call those out, but if you have a question, let me know, and we can figure it out.
Thanks.
Okay. So this, the second proposal is Amendment 1 of Council Bill 2. Council Bill 2 will probably be the longest one we discuss tonight, since most of the changes are in Chapter 16. Again, during the code modernization, the language that's underlined in Table Notes 2 and 3 was present prior to the code modernization. For whatever reason, that explicit language wasn't brought over. And so this is returning those, that language and those abilities as part of this housekeeping amendment. To Councilman Sheldon's point, the first note that's there currently exists in the code, and there's no proposed changes to that.
Can I just ask a quick clarification about the footnote number 3? So it says, the first sentence says that if the property owner owns the horses, and footnote 3, at least right here, only really appears in relation to R3 and 3A.
Correct.
So I'm assuming it doesn't show up anywhere else in the table that's not shown here?
That's correct.
Okay. So a 3 or 3, a zone 3 or 3A property owner can house their own horses as long as their lot is bigger than one acre.
That's correct.
And then they can also have a maximum of two horses that they don't own.
That's correct.
That only in 3 and 3A, so R1 can have any number of horses they don't own?
So the short answer is yes, that's correct, but they still have to meet the nuisance requirements for animals, regardless of what zone district you're in.
Okay, we have nuisance requirements for animals?
We do.
Paul, this is addressing horses. What about other hoofed animals?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What about other hoofed animals?
Goats or llamas or...
Yeah, those are allowed. There's no changes. There was no change during the code modernization. Those are still allowed. There's no changes to those.
And you can have other people's llamas on your property?
So long as you don't violate the nuisance requirements.
Okay. Hmm, okay. And I'm going to just apologize in advance that I don't think I was at the June 21st meeting. So when I was reading, and I'm like, this is really, this sounds all very new to me, and I went back and looked at my calendar. So, okay.
No, that's fine. And no, please, that's what this is for, is to have this discussion.
I guess personally, my general feeling about this is I see an approve of the direction. I'm not so sure that we're closing all of the gaps with what's here.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed, and that's part of why, I preface, it's our intention as staff, regardless of whatever other meatier amendments we may bring to you, our goal is to, on a yearly basis, bring forward a series of housekeeping amendments like this that help us close some of those loopholes or close those gaps.
What is the nuisance, animal nuisance?
It basically talks about odor and dirt and...
Paul, are you referencing in Chapter 7?
That's one. I was thinking more of the section that, the 162250 that's referenced in footnote 2.
1622...
No, but it talks about how you have to maintain the, you can't let the manure pile up.
162250 is agricultural land uses, which is no agricultural use shall be permitted if offensive or injurious because of odor, noise, dust, fume, smoke, or other nuisances.
Okay.
And then 162730, which is cross-referenced, talks about limited horse boarding and equestrian training on the property. Yep.
One acre just seems really small to have, you know, six horses. Four that belong to me and two that don't belong to...
It is.
This is a carryover of language that existed. That doesn't mean that has to be your ongoing policy?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It was just something that was lost?
I guess that's my point, is that I understand what we're trying to do. I'm not really sure that just carrying over that language addresses...
That is the intent of this particular initiative, is to restore some things that were lost, correct some things that were incorrect in that first round upgrade. Certainly open to further discussion, however.
And, yeah, if there's, there's probably a third category tonight. There's maybe potential amendments that you might want to have to this for the second reading. There might be just general thoughts, but there's also stuff you may want us to add to the list. As Paul mentioned, we have a list going of things. We've probably already got enough for the next round that we could do next month. We want to, this is not exciting enough to warrant... to warrant coming every month, but if you have stuff, Mayor Protim Brown, that might be one where you say, hey, look, can you add that to the list for further consideration?
Yeah.
It probably requires some, some analysis that just carrying it over from before doesn't give us.
Right, okay.
I am, I am not suggesting at all that we need Todd Messenger, our attorney who helped us with this code rewrite, to opine on this particular subject at all, but has he been involved in this update whatsoever, the general update, what we're looking at?
We've reached out to him to pick his brain, see what he remembers about how certain things ended up the way that they ended up.
Okay.
Yeah.
A question, it seems like we've got some boundaries around horses and how many one can have and so on. Did I, what, what happens about other, like farm animals? I mean, is there any?
Or even dogs or?
Yeah, dogs, cows, goats, geese.
We can't have cows, I don't think cows are allowed, are they?
I don't know, I mean.
I think cows are prohibited somewhere, aren't they?
No, you can have cows.
I, I don't know about cows, but I do know that we allow other animals, whether that's llamas or chickens or goats or whatever, pigs, yeah.
Well, could, could we get a bigger picture? I, I don't want to slow things down now, but get a bigger picture, because there seems, like I'm having trouble understanding why we're very precise about horses, but not about other large animals or even small noisy animals or whatever. Okay.
We'll bring this back.
Yeah, thanks.
So when you, when you say you're going to bring something back, does, so I'm understanding the process, does that mean that we're not going to be hearing this at second reading at the meeting two weeks from now?
No, I don't, I don't want to slow, slow that part of it down.
I don't know that there's a rush, so I guess I'm asking the question of staff, if you're saying you're going to bring something back to us addressing farm animals.
Yeah, an overview of our farm animal regulations, we could either, I could either provide that to you as a standalone document in an email, or we could have a scheduled item.
Okay, so as of right now, we can probably still stay on track for two weeks from now if, if staff's able to provide us supplemental information.
Correct.
Okay, let's keep going.
Well, if I can just add a little bit of more breadcrumbs about how we got here. So this code, as adopted, has a definition for livestock that explicitly excludes bees, donkeys, horses, or mules, and it includes cattle, llamas, alpacas, sheep, goats, pigs, rabbits, chickens, turkeys, pheasants, ducks, and other animals. So when you looked at definitions that included livestock and horses were specifically excluded, that was another piece of the puzzle, so we will put together the puzzle for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions on that one?
The next one in Council Bill 2, in going through the code, you'll see in a moment, there's a proposed amendment to update a definition for short-term rental to align it from 90 days to 30 days consistent with this language. When we were looking at that, it was discovered that accessory dwelling units is referenced in this amendment, and the city doesn't allow for accessory dwelling units, so...
Paul, if I can ask you on that, because I, I, I've read this, and then I read, going over to the next page, talking about accessory building, somebody, if they own a primary residence, can buy a lot next door and build an accessory unit that they could use as a accessory dwelling unit. The way I read the footnote on number 7 on the Table 163, if you read that, it says accessory structures are not allowed, if it's owned by the same property owner with a shared property line, the lot with the principal structure is being used for residential purposes, then they can have that, it seems to me that this conflicts where they can have an accessory dwelling unit. Is that right, or have I been misreading that?
Well, we allow for a guest house, we don't allow for an accessory dwelling unit, it may be splitting hairs, but the intent of the number 2 in Council Bill 2 is just to align the language consistent with other sections of the code. And then the, the reference to the accessory structures, that's in relation to, in practice, historically, the city has approved accessory structures in this scenario that is on a lot that's adjacent to a primary structure owned by the same person, but the code doesn't give explicit ability to do that, and so based on the feedback from the study session, we, we caught, we would propose to codify the ability to approve those sorts of things subject to these three criteria that would have to be met.
But it doesn't say in footnote 7 that if somebody owns a lot adjacent to it, they have the primary structure on one lot, that they can build this accessory, it seems to me it's an accessory dwelling unit, if there can be, according to footnote number 7, or am I misreading that? Maybe I can ask our attorney on this.
Accessing, accessory building.
Accessory building.
Accessory building, accessory structures.
Yes.
So a structure...
ADU.
Huh?
Different than an...
Yeah, an accessory dwelling unit specifically is more like kitchen, you know, there's some things that are related to dwelling, a domicile use of the structure, as opposed to a structure that is auxiliary to a primary structure, which is a dwelling unit.
Pool house.
Right, so in this proposed amendment, you can't rent a guest house for a short-term rental. Can you rent it for a long-term rental? No, that, I didn't think so either, which is why...
And if you had a, a pool house on an adjacent lot that was owned by both owners, you could have that condition, but it could not be an accessory dwelling unit. You can't charge rent, you can't, short-term, long-term, you can't do any of that.
Yeah.
But can somebody rent that quote pool house, and they have a kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom, can they rent that out on a short-term basis?
No.
No.
That's what this says, you can't rent...
Well, it talks about guest house, and to me, it's an accessory dwelling unit.
No.
So I don't know what we gained by that.
Do we have a definition of ADU?
Yeah.
Well, we have a definition of guest house, I believe.
So we're, we're removing all reference to ADUs?
Yeah.
So it doesn't show up anywhere in the code?
For, for really, for this reason, I mean, we're trying to clarify kind of the conflict.
Because I, I was going to ask what the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a guest house is, but I do think those two names imply different things. An accessory dwelling unit means an extra house.
Correct.
Where someone lives.
Yes.
And we do have a definition for dwelling unit, right, which means any building or part thereof providing complete independent living facilities, this is saying it much better than I just did, for one of our persons with living, cooking, eating, sanitation, bathing, and sleeping that's designed to be occupied for residential purposes.
So a guest house is not intended to be occupied...
Right, a guest house is defined differently than dwelling unit, and finding it, a residential accessory building that may be occupied by members of the family occupying the dwelling, their non-paying guests on a temporary basis or domestic service.
Yes, okay.
Right, so, so not a full-time residence. It's if I have my, my folks in town, they could stay in there for a week or, or six months.
Or it could be your housekeeper or your property manager.
But not a full-time residence.
Right, and you certainly can't pay for it.
Right.
So there's a, a line, the policy line is commercial use of that property, right? That's how it's being...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, keep going.
Okay.
I don't know. I think he's getting back to the...
Oh.
There we go. So this is one we were just kind of talking about, I don't know if there's any additional clarification or questions from council on this, but this would, again, codify the historical practice of the city of approving accessory structures on lots owned by the same property owner and adjacent to the same property, but legally separate parcel.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so let me just make sure I understand, so what we're doing now by adding this language in footnote 7, if we were to approve this, is there, is there a restriction here on lot sizes in order to have this accessory building or accessory structure or guest house?
There's not.
Okay, so it can happen in any one of our zone, five zone districts?
Potentially.
So I just want to make sure I understand then, so if I've got a house, I own 2 lots, I have a house on one that I live in with my family, I can build a guest house on the other one as a standalone structure, that's the only building on that lot?
Correct, as long, in that scenario, if you met these three criteria.
What happens when I want to sell that lot?
That's my issue.
That's going to be a problem.
Because don't we have a, we have some kind of issue in, on South Lane or Viking Drive with a guest house that was built?
And no primary?
No primary structure. And I, I don't want to necessarily dig in the weeds on that particular instance, but I do wonder, and I don't know that this happens 3 times in the next decade, this instance that we're talking about right now, but maybe, so I just asked the question, what, what are we anticipating happens if I own those 2 lots, and I decide I no longer want my guest house, and I want to put that up for sale?
That's a point well made, right? We, we do have, I can think of a couple of them offhand, where we do have like a tennis court and that kind of stuff on lots that potentially could be sold independently, and now you have separate ownership and all they have is a tennis court. That exists in the, in the village today.
That's what's been approved by practice.
Right.
For years. I, I would, I would offer to you that our, this amendment being done and clarifying in conjunction with the guest house definition that we have, would render that structure to be not occupiable by a separate family. However, if that feels flimsy, and I can tell it is with one person...
Well, I got even bigger problems than that, but keep going.
If that feels flimsy, we could add a clarification here that excluded guest houses from this allowance.
Yep.
Well, I think that, I personally think that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish by precluding a guest house.
There, there, I, I think there's...
Can I raise what I see as a much bigger issue? We have 2 cases in the last year where this has been, has created an enormous issue. This is the mega mansion, people buying lots and consolidating them, but not consolidating them, they do have an option to consolidate multiple properties, that is an available avenue.
And vacate lot lines.
And vacate lot lines. This, I have, I really actually have huge concerns about our practice of doing this and the fact that we have allowed it, and I don't need to reiterate the issues where it has been an issue. People buy a house and build a pool on the other one, and oh, what do you know, there's a trail between your lots. So I do, I don't think it's good policy to generally allow people, if you want to consolidate multiple lots into one big property, do it.
But you're saying do it properly and vacate the lot line?
Yes, do it properly and vacate the lot line and make it one property so that you can't then sell it off later, and now all of a sudden I own a pool in Cherry Hills Village with no house, or anything of that nature.
Or a barn, yeah.
And I, and I look at, like in my neighborhood, you know, with our tiny little houses, if I bought my neighbor's house and tore it down and built my tennis court there, that would just be weird.
So, so, let me just, from a staff perspective, I, I think this really starts from the fact of us trying to, it was, we, we couldn't find any code provision allowing what had been done in practice. So our priority was to clean up the practice, not necessarily make the policy decision about it. If council wants to go in that direction that, that Mayor Protim Brown is referring to, I'll, that is what I'm used to. This whole provision and the fact that we've been doing it, and we found multiple examples over the years where this was permitted for multiple different regimes, you know, we weren't really in the place to sort of change, change the policy surrounding it, we were just trying to at least make it so that there's something that points to it. If council wants to maybe pull this one and have a bigger policy conversation, I think staff would be supportive of that conversation.
Absolutely.
That's what I would advocate.
I think that's the route we've got to go, because it says here, you're saying the code does not specifically restrict or allow that, and I think we need to have the, the policy discussion on that, and I would pull this from your proposed amendments, and then we deal with that.
We would support that.
Let me, let me just throw out one thing, Katie, that I, I do think kind of counters your one comment about having a trail in between the pool house and the main house, or the tennis court and the main house. Clearly, that applicant needs to come in for a building permit. Staff would be pointing out that there is a trail running in between the 2 lots. Now, we could always go down the road, go down a rabbit hole of getting an applicant who wants to get a trail vacated, and if there's some reason why that should happen, that's, you know, that goes in a whole different direction, but I think that we're covered on that particular issue, because staff's going to point out, hey bud, you've got a trail running in between your 2 lots.
That didn't happen.
Yeah, but our code, Dan, our code specifically doesn't prevent that, they can do that.
Yeah, it doesn't, they can...
They can do it the way that our code's drafted now, so I think that's something...
But since it's silent, they could just buy a lot and build a pool on it.
Right, and, and so there's a trail, no problem, give me my permit anyway, I'm okay with the trail.
I have, I have an adjacent, I have an adjacent property line, because the trail's just nearby, but anyway.
And are we, are we not okay with somebody buying a lot to build a pool on it, all by itself, or a guest house for that matter? I mean, if it, if they know at the, if they know when they go get permitted for the said guest house, that they can't turn around, resell that lot with said guest house on it for a primary structure, right, because they can't, a guest house cannot be lived in as a primary structure, do we care? They just sold a, a, a lot that's got a half a million or a $5 million guest house on it, I don't know that, that it's our decision to make whether or not they should or shouldn't be doing that.
Right now, our code has nothing to prevent that.
And then the other...
Or allow, either way, that's the problem.
The other thing that this doesn't talk about is the example that you mentioned, where this talks about building something on a separate adjacent lot, it doesn't talk about, for example, at Colorado and Quincy, where they built their guest house first, which probably should be allowed, you know, while they're building their...
It's all 1 lot.
I know, it's 1 lot, but this doesn't say, this only talks about, you couldn't do that either. You can't just build an accessory building on a single lot, this doesn't even allow that.
Without a primary residence.
This has, this is only talking about multiple lots.
So we did have a scenario, just to really, I, I think all this points to maybe a subsequent policy conversation, because I can give you a scenario that actually muddies the waters, we did have a lot where somebody built an accessory structure after the primary structure was constructed, they then moved into the accessory structure and tore down the primary structure, therefore changing the definition of what the primary structure was on the lot, which I, the neighbors were none too pleased with that new accessory structure becoming the primary residence. Like, wait a second, this is, doesn't fit with our neighborhood.
Maybe that's the one I'm thinking of.
That is the one you're thinking of.
Yeah, so, so I, I think these kinds of questions, again, we were not attempting to make a bold policy change, we were just trying to at least provide some sort of basis in the code.
Or for what we do.
That's all. We would totally support a bigger conversation.
I think, so I think where we're going here is, is withdraw this one.
We'll pull this one.
And pull this one in for the conversation, I think that's really due, I, I, as part of that further conversation, we need to identify whether properties in the, in the village are like this, because I know of, in the Buell, there's one, all right, he owns 3, 3 2 and 1/2 acre lots, right? This is, you know, that's going to be grandfathered in, I guess, we're going to have a lot of grandfathered properties.
Is it, is it our job to, to play arbiter as to whether or not somebody can buy a lot to build themselves a pool?
It's a residential lot, though, so it's not, you're not entitled to necessarily use it just for a pool, it's a residential lot.
That's, that's exactly the question we need to deal with, but we need to get the facts about what's out there now, and then understand, and then make a policy decision about whether that is a good policy or a bad policy. I can see both, I can, I could...
All right, well, I definitely agree, it needs more, it needs more discussion.
More discussion than just...
We're not going to figure it out right now.
Great, let's pull that one, and then, so that's number 3, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Number 4.
And, and sincerely appreciate that discussion, so please, don't feel like you're going to hurt feelings or anything if we have good discussion, so. Let's see here, the next one in Council Bill 2, right now, again, the code doesn't really give direction on discretionary approvals in terms of how council approves those discretionary approvals, think of site plan amendments... Think of site plan amendments, conditionally used permits, things like that. And in the past, it's been kind of a mixed bag of voice vote, voice vote versus resolution for a variety of reasons. Staff would recommend that we codify that those discretionary approvals are done by resolution. And this language would, would require that.
Any comments about that one?
Nope.
Seems to make sense. Okay.
This next one in Council Bill Two has a sister related set of amendments in Chapter Seventeen. But what this amendment is attempting to do is essentially three things. It's, it's some modifications to the public notification requirements. Essentially, it's to have one set of public notification requirements regardless of the land use application, so that there's not confusion when you get more than one land use application, why one neighbor got noticed and another didn't, and one got noticed 10 days ago and one got noticed 15 days ago. So it's just for clarity and transparency. The other is to try and, as best we can, try and have most of the land use application notification requirements in one place. Right now, they're in Sixteen and Seventeen. This would clean it up and put them all in Chapter Sixteen. And the other one is to change the publication requirement from the newspaper to the city's website.
So that's the only one that I have an issue with. I know newspapers are not as popular as they used to be when all of this was written, but there is one enormous difference between a newspaper and a website. One is a push notification and one is a poll notification, where I have to go to the city's website actively and seek out the information as opposed to it being delivered to me.
I'm 100% in agreement.
And that is, it's just, I know, it's not a great way of doing it, but it's, the newspaper's not as effective as it used to be, but it's still better than expecting people to go look at the website every day.
It's just, it's not, it's not, it's not fair to ask neighbors to go online and be, have it be incumbent upon them to go seek this information. It's just not, they won't. I mean, they won't, except the real proactive ones, they might, but at least in the newspaper, we can do what's been tried and tested for 100 years and say, we published.
Yeah.
Well, the concern I have about the newspaper is many people don't have subscriptions.
Of course not.
And, and so in a sense, it's neither push nor poll, it's no communication.
But that's the same with every newspaper publication, whether you're a metro district, a city, a county, state government, whatever it is, they're putting notice out there, notice to creditors, notice of a, you know, death in a probate court issue, notice of a, whatever notice is. You may or may not subscribe to that local publication, but if you do, you're going to maybe go look to the back page of it. If you don't, tough luck, notice was given.
I think it should be both. I do think we should be posting all this stuff on our website.
I'm fine doing both, I just don't like.
That's where I was going. I was with either.
Yes, there are, and, you know, but at least you're pushing it out to the people who get the newspaper, which is more than zero, which is the people you're pushing it out to if you don't even advertise in the newspaper.
So, so just for clarification, we do currently do both.
Yeah.
So, so that's, that's standard. I will say the concern about direct neighbors, remember the publication is one of three ways for notification, right? So there are signs placed on the property and they'll have to mail notification to everybody within 1,000 feet. So really, we're talking about those people that aren't in close proximity, that may have an interest in the land use application.
And I think that there are, for example, the Public Works Facility, there were a lot of people who don't live within 1,000 feet of that lot who showed up at that meeting. So I think there are definitely lots, not all of them, you know, there are some that are tucked away, but there are definitely lots that people feel impacted by, even if they don't live in that immediate vicinity. So that was going to be my other, if we, if people weren't on board with sticking with the newspaper, I was going to suggest that the mailing then would have to be much bigger.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe we want to do that anyway, considering the, the semi-rural nature of our community, we're not all sitting here on.
100, 1,000 feet's not all.
60 by 100 foot lots where we've got a million neighbors within 1,000 feet of us. Some of us are on lots where we only have two or three neighbors within 1,000 feet, maybe four or five neighbors, right? But maybe we want to make that bigger. I'm not trying to make, you know, life more difficult for our applicants and our staff who has to administer this. I assume staff provides the neighbor with the mailing list, or do you guys actually do the mailers?
We, we write the letter and we provide the addresses.
Right.
The applicant is, has to do the mailing and provide us.
It's a combination of both the applicant and staff's time. I know staff may charge an application fee that's supposed to cover theoretically some of that time. Maybe we should consider increasing that radius a little bit, maybe it's 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet. It's hard because it just depends, you go to, you go to an R5 zoning and 1,000 feet gets, picks up a whole mess of neighbors. You go to an R1 zoning, especially a very, you know, big rural R1 zoning and you might only have half a dozen neighbors that get noticed.
When it's, I specifically look at the major special event permit, and I'm reminded of, you know, that giant party. A major special event can affect far more people than live in 1,000 feet. If they're parking all the way up and down the street, if they're, right? So I think, I think more is more in this case.
Paul, I might ask for your kind of background opinion in your previous life in Parker. Parker had some dense neighborhoods and some rural neighborhoods. What was the posting requirement there?
For public hearings, it was a sign that was created that the applicant was responsible for installing. It was mailing, I want to say it was either 1,000 or 1,500 feet, I don't remember, it was one of the two. And then they did their publications on their website.
But 1,000 or 1,500, it wasn't anything less than, it wasn't 500, I mean.
No. Generally speaking, an industry standard, you're not going to find less than 1,000 feet.
500 in your jurisdiction, city manager. Anyway.
Who's the director over there?
I just, it's not expensive to advertise in the newspaper. If a few people see it who wouldn't have otherwise, you know, more is more.
What satisfies publication here?
Currently?
Or under this proposal, what are we talking about for publication? Are we talking about the Villager? Does it have to be the Villager? It could be the, it could be the, our own paper.
For, are you talking about as proposed or what we currently have codified in code?
Both or either.
Okay. So right now, it has to be published in a newspaper in general circulation in the community 15 days before the hearing, which generally means we have to get that notification to the paper two to four weeks before it needs to run so that they can get it all lined up. As proposed, we would post it on our website 15 days prior to the, the hearing.
I would just add that the Villager, you know, for all, I love the Villager, but it gets no notice to anybody. Nobody subscribes, nobody reads it. I mean, for, for this purpose. And, and this is not the way it's going legally. In the legal community, the notices are not going to newspapers anymore because they're, because nobody is looking there. So I, you know, I, I understand, you're saying you might get it, but it's not going to happen. I mean, realistically, it would be much more likely if we could put it in our crier. But I, but I do think that posting on our website or a notice, a push notice from our notify me or something like that, that would be really more likely to get somebody's attention and to get some, get some information, so.
That, that's already done, actually.
Russell, I, I think about picking up on what you said. I think if our job is effective communication, I, I, everybody gets the crier. And so even if it referred to the website, but it gave some content of what the, you know, here's, there's this going on, if you want more details, go to the, go to the website and give the URL. I, I think that's going to be more effective communication than putting it in the Villager.
Agreed, but it's only monthly.
Yeah, there's some complications.
We have to change the timeframes then, but still, you know, I, I, I think that's more effective at the end of the day.
Well, it's, it's optional to, to do that, right? The crier would not qualify as a newspaper of general circulation under state law, so you'd have to make some other changes. And to the mayor's point, just for information of council, the open meetings law has already been amended to encourage and try to get folks to, you know, city councils to post notice of their meetings on their website. You know, to the, they're actually making some, they're sort of holding off on enforcing it for some of the smaller rural communities that don't have all the resources to be able to do that right now. But that's the, the general push, just to, to the mayor's point. So, you know, there's no prohibition on the crier, but we wouldn't, I would not say that that meets a newspaper of general circulation. So if you wanted to do website with a, with a policy decision direction to staff to say in the crier for, you know, just a generic notice, because it's only published monthly, right? You know, for all notices, go to the website, you know, or some other communication.
I think it would be interesting to have some information about our website traffic because while I understand your point, Russell, about the Villager's circulation, I would actually believe it's probably more than the number of people who visit our website.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, I know it's not everybody, but I think it's more than the people who go to our website.
That'd be good to know. It'd be good to know the number of people in Cherry Hills Village who take the Villager versus the number, versus the number that get on our website. That would be a.
But I think if we go back to trying to solve the problem of effective communication, it may be something in the crier that lists particulars, you know, not, not all the detail, not the whole boilerplate, but, but, you know, we've got this permit, this whatever, land use, you know, other things that are the topic that we would have published in the Villager, but we give them the headline and then point them to the website. I think that might be more effective than, than.
And I would imagine we certainly could change this to not say newspaper of general circulation. The timing might really be a drag for.
Well, no, I mean, I think, I think we get the, we, we meet the legal issue by putting it on the website.
Yeah.
But we're helpful in pointing people to what's on the website, so it becomes less of a, less of a poll.
But if they don't get the notice before the hearing, then what is it?
We need to get the dates so that, that they get the notice before the hearing.
Well, that's right, the crier, I think deadline for the crier is like a month in advance or?
We'd have the same issue with the crier in terms of timing that we currently have with the Villager.
Yeah.
The, the benefit of the Villager is it runs multiple times, right? Whereas the crier's only once a month. The lead time would still be the same, it would just be more difficult.
Well, it could potentially be double, because if it only runs once a month.
Right.
You know.
I hadn't realized that we're doing this on note, you're pushing out on notify me, all of this stuff as well?
That's, yeah.
The agendas, I don't get public notices on notify me.
Could we do public notices through notify me? Couldn't we have, couldn't we have our residents sign up to receive public notices on notify me?
We could separate, we, we now do all the agendas, but we could also do.
That would, to me, would be the way to really, then, then anybody interested in getting it, it's like getting the Villager. Yeah, you have to sign up and pay for the Villager. You, you could sign up, you have to sign up and pay for notify me, but it's free. And, and once you, once you sign up, you're on it forever and you get all note, all public notices from the city. That seems to me to be a more economical and, and effective way of communicating these public notices to people in our village.
I would, I would agree. It is very effective. The problem with it is how many of our residents are signed up?
It's, it's around 300, I think, for a, a general list. All the lists have different amounts of signup, but I would also offer, we have our social media, Facebook and Nextdoor. Nextdoor in particular, I think, has been rather effective for us.
Listen, there's not going to be a catch-all. We're not going to find one thing that's going to get everybody.
That's why I say more is more.
I, I agree with you, I think more is more. It's a function of being reasonable with staff and with the applicant about what their requirements are to post.
The applicants obviously are going to love to post notify me and website because it's, it quickens things up. You don't have to wait for publication, you know, all the lead times and everything else. So they're going to like that. I would think that our residents would like it because they can be sure of getting, all they need to go is go on the website and be sure and sign up for it and they will get all public notices. That would be, I would do that in a heartbeat. Anyway, that's my, my thought is about that.
I'm still a fan of requiring, how much does it cost to post a notice in the paper?
Not a lot. I just, I just ran a quarter page in the Villager and it was 125 or 150 dollars for a quarter page.
Yeah.
So, if you're writing an inch.
Again, you know, you're going to get some people via email, you're going to get some people via the letter, you're going to get some people via the sign, and I think you can get some people via the newspaper as well.
Yeah, another comment about?
I was just going to say that the cost for publications is between 20 and 40 dollars, depending on how much text we have.
To, for the Villager?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to go forward, I've got a question for council now, do you want to go forward with this or you want to pull it off and think about it more or do you, what do you want to do?
What I would ask to clarify is, so really, we're talking about the notification type. The other amendments or changes, we're generally okay with.
Yes.
So then I think it gets to the mayor's point or, or the question you were just getting ready to ask. As it relates to the publication, how does council want to move forward? Is that?
Do you want, do you want us to, we could, this is first reading, we could ask, we could ask staff to come forward with a proposal for publication that we can consider, with some language, we could then consider on second reading. Does that make sense?
We could even come back with like option A and B.
Right, yes, that's what I'm thinking.
I would envision coming back with.
Would it be getting too complicated if we suggested that our two and, our one and our two zoning were bumped up to a 1,500 foot radius and our three, three A and four and five remained 1,000?
That's not going to necessarily be onerous. The issue you're going to run into is when you get lots that are potentially adjacent to other zone districts, right?
If the subject property is in, is in a certain one, it either it's 1,000 or 15. I just think, I think when we get into the larger lots, I think 1,000 feet isn't enough.
I think, why don't you make a motion and if you want to prepare, just motion articulating that, saying, hey, come back, directing staff, asking staff to come back with those changes and, and some options on the publication and.
The other thing I'll commit to doing is doing some research on some other surrounding communities and what their buffers are for notification.
And, and we, that may be, we may be the only one thinking about doing that, and that may, we may be right, we may be wrong, I don't know.
I'd be supportive of either that or if we think that's too confusing, I'd be supportive of a higher number for everybody.
Yeah.
That, just as.
Do you want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion to do that or staff understand the direction we're giving you?
I, I understand the direction, I'll, do we legally need? I, I just don't know. Do we need?
Well, when we approve these.
No, we could just approve it like this with directions to come back with options.
Lloyd, I don't think we're done with the, you mean when we do motions.
Okay.
All right. All right, anything more, Mr. Workman?
Well, I've got one, I've got one more issue on, I guess it's the same topic here. Paul, I don't know if we're actually on it yet or not, it's, it's, it's the table of all the different land use, land uses and which ones require which type of postings.
Okay.
I think we've talked a little bit about this in the past and I know I've had some high level philosophical discussions with Chris about this in the past. Do we, do we city council really want to be reviewing final plats? I can tell you, as my experience in the industry, my day job, final plats are not something that city councils should be reviewing. They're, they're engineering documents, they're very technical, there's a whole bunch of criteria that need to be met. I might be qualified to review a final plat and provide comment to it. Al, Al's looked at enough, he might. Russell, you maybe are, I don't know your background in land use, but the rest of you probably aren't, and that's no disrespect to any of you.
I'm sure that my web development background makes me an expert in final plats.
But I just, I, I do know that in some of these other jurisdictions I'm working in, I'm trying to convince their staff when they're updating their code, please take that process out of city council's hands, put it in staff's. We have a lot of other things on this table that are, recently, that we recently pulled back from city council having, and having to act on a site plan. If it was below certain thresholds, we didn't, we didn't even look at it. It was for staff to go review and approve. I think a final plat, in my opinion, falls under that same kind of condition. It is not something that we should be reviewing, unless I'm missing something else that maybe Kathy or Chris want to jump in on. I think, I think we should kick, so that would be in, on page nine of our paper staff memo here. Middle of the page, final plat, minor subdivisions and amended plats. You know, unless it gets called up, which is another way to handle it, right? If it's, it is, what I've seen is that it's, you know, if it's a staff-level decision, if for some reason staff looks at it, and, and it would be at the, at either the planning director's suggestion, or, or city manager, they suggest, you know what, this is kind of something I don't want to touch. I think council really needs to opine on this particular plat. Then they can bump it up, and it becomes in our purview or jurisdiction. Otherwise, I think it should remain at staff.
How frequent are plat revisions?
Excuse me, revisions to plats?
Or final plats?
This, this final plat question, I'm, the city's basically all platted, right? So.
I've done at least three since I've been.
I was going to say, they, they happen not very frequently compared to other communities. What the, what we process more of are amendments to existing final plats, to move property lines or consolidate property, that kind of stuff. Not, not very often do we process a true final plat.
Denver First Church would be the last one.
And we did.
Well, that was only the preliminary.
But still, that would have, that was on the path towards.
You're talking about the, the lots that they're turning into the four lots here.
And the subdivision of, this might be before, I don't know, the subdivision at, on Quincy there, at near Dahlia, between Dahlia and.
Hawkins.
Yeah, the Hawkins property, subdivision, we did that.
That happened in, in 2017, right before I came on.
Okay, yeah, so, there've been a few.
I can give you some history, some background on this, because I've discussed it before, and it is a little bit unusual, but there's been a kind of jealous, the council has been jealous in guarding that power, because the Buell was one, and it came to, there was a lot of discussion, and council, about the Buell approval of the final plat, right? Because of trails and the lake and everything else. So it's, it wasn't just a, there's a lot of, because of the interest of our village in getting the trails right and all this other stuff, you know, that, that, the council has always said, wait a minute, we, we want a final say in where that trail goes, or how that trail works.
But I think there's two different processes, mayor. I think there's a final plat and the site plan, or the SDP, or whatever we call it here.
Oh.
This SDP or the site plan would actually be the one we would, we would look at that would, that would dictate the trails and the connectivity and the landscape buffers, and the plat is purely cutting up the lots and the tangents and the radii and all the legal descriptions, and it's not really something I think we should be looking at. Now, I agree with you, Randy, we don't see very many of them, but if we're sitting here making this code amendment, this falls squarely into this discussion, I think.
Thoughts, city manager, any thoughts?
It is not a discretionary process. The findings for a subdivision plat, a final plat, are very technical in nature. You don't get to negotiate those findings. So from that perspective, it certainly could be administrative. I would offer that the mayor, generally speaking, is correct, councils have been very reluctant to give up that authority, because, and this is, I'm editorializing and not about this council. Councils sometimes like to use that tool for land use and other things that it is not really explicitly set out for, so the process gets abused. With that said, I do think there's a due process element to this, and I don't think you could just blindly make it an administrative process. You would need to make an opportunity, a, a building permit is strictly, you know, a, a black and white issue, but there's still an appeal process. You would need to have some sort of ability for an objection, so it could be brought to city council for.
We went through that, that exact same step-by-step, how we, we walk through each step, what happens if somebody appeals it, what happens if, if they don't like the decision, how it gets appealed and gets kicked up and whatever, when we did the site plan amendment a year and a half ago, whenever we amended this the first time. I don't know, I, I'm not, I'm not going to fall on the sword over this issue for, you know, so you all know, I don't, if this, if you guys, if nobody else supports this, I'll drop it, but it just doesn't seem like it's in our purview, and if we're going to crack this thing open and play with this, I think we should maybe think about it.
I think it's possible. I would, I would probably say it's probably bigger than the housekeeping amendment category. But if council wants to give that direction, we absolutely, I, I think it'd be fairly easy and straightforward to bring some options back to you.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe some options, guys, and then we'll, we can decide, and if the majority of us, of us want to leave it alone and leave it at a council discretion.
I could be persuaded, and I think, and I, because of our community, we don't have a lot of this going on, so it's really not a big deal. Um, yeah, I think that, could we bring that back, outside of this process?
Right.
Bring that, bring that back? Absolutely. Direction to staff, is that good?
So, real quickly, to make sure I understand what the process would be now that we've changed this, let's say that that Hawkins property subdivision came up. Is the first step a site plan? There were issues during that process about where they wanted to put the dedicated land. Of course, they wanted to make it the most useless, you know, and where they wanted to put the trail, and there was a lot of negotiation around that. Where would that, is that the sketch, I assume it goes sketch plat, preliminary plat, final plat?
Correct.
Is there a step even before, where would that discussion have taken place in here? Because to your point, that's what people do care about, and that's what I would be hesitant to give up.
The site plan would be a concurrent application with, excuse me, with whichever step they are in the plating process. So the, the sketch plat would, the way the code's currently written, would go to Planning and Zoning Commission for a discussion. The preliminary plat would come to city council for your review and, and approval, and then depending on how you all wanted to go with a final plat, that final plat would either then be approved administratively or by council, or if there were some type of a push-up provision where the director or the city manager could make that determination.
Good, well, I think that's very helpful. Let's bring that forward again as a separate, that'll be interesting discussion.
All right. Amendment six in this council bill two. Hopefully, this one's pretty straightforward. It is to correct a misspelling for follow instead of follows. The next one, the, these next series are either amendments or additions to the definition section of our code, and so this gets a little bit to the conversation we were having a few minutes ago, where we further clarify the definition for accessory structure, specifically noting that pergolas are an accessory structure, and noting that detached patios, when they're not enclosed, and built-in fireplaces and barbecue grills are not accessory structures, which currently are included in that definition and count towards the, the maximum number and square footage.
So those would not be considered encroachments then, under the way we now rewrote this?
They'd still have to meet the setback requirements, they would, but they would not be counted towards the maximum number of three or five or whatever it is, plus the additional square footage.
Okay.
Why is swimming capitalized?
What, Katie?
In revised, in the, it says, oh, because it's the beginning of a sentence, I didn't see the period there. Sorry.
You had to be nervous. Oh, no, I forgot.
It was a trick question.
Okay. Thoughts on that one? Yes?
There was just, there was a small one on the prior page, on page nine, on footnote or note number two, it's all struck except for the word reserved. Was there any intention to leave reserved in there?
On which one?
I, I can. It's at the bottom, so.
Strike it and replace it with reserved.
It's optional notices, so if you'll notice in F1, it says that the opt-in distribution list, basically the notify me, was an optional means of notification. And then two had internet as a courtesy, as a way of meeting additional notification. And we could have deleted it altogether, but in my experience, notification options are evolving.
We just talked about it.
Right. So I thought it might be more prudent to just leave it as reserved, so we had the space and the numbering, should we want to augment it again.
Oh, okay, you intended to leave reserved in there, then?
Yes.
Correct.
It's a way to hold that space, should we want to put something else in it.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the accessory structure definition? Additional discussion? The next one, as Kathy alluded to, our code has a definition for agricultural livestock, and within that definition, there's a reference to animal husbandry, which, there's no definition for animal husbandry currently in the code, and so this would add a definition for that, clarifying what we mean when we say animal husbandry. Seven point three in council bill two. Currently, we do not have a definition for principal structure, or it's, we have a definition for accessory structure, not principal structure, so this would add that definition so that we can further clarify and make a distinction between principal structure and accessory structure. Give you all a minute to digest.
I just wasn't, is personal reasons really the right word? Or should it be residential? Principal structure means the one structure that is used for either business or personal reasons. I mean, I don't, I guess, either way, but that struck me as a little odd.
I'm not sure about the, a clubhouse used for the administration, registration purposes of a country club?
So I think what they're saying is like the Cherry Hills Country Club clubhouse is the principal structure, and everything else is.
I understand that, I just don't know why we're, why it doesn't just say a clubhouse for a country club?
Seems like it's limiting.
I mean, is there a reason you guys added the words administration slash registration purposes?
Just to further clarify, that it's for what I would call administrative purposes, and if, that you couldn't have a, let's say, racquetball court or whatever, indoor golf simulator, whatever, and count that as your principal structure.
If that was in a 55,000-square-foot Cherry Hills Country Club building, it'd be fine.
That's correct. But if it were, if it were the only building that had.
Golf simulator.
Right.
Okay.
But, but again, we can, we can massage this and bring back some revised language.
I don't feel strongly about it, I just found it, the wording interesting.
Well, and like, what would, obviously, what would the principal structure of ATC be? I don't know.
Administration and registration. I don't know.
But I don't, you don't really do that in the.
No, it's recreation and playing cards and socializing.
And is that really, is that the principal structure? I don't know.
I don't know.
The tennis courts might be, but whatever, okay.
We can, we can, we can play around with this for second reading.
You could say, I would delete the word either, too, for used for business or other reasons. Used for, and, why?
Residential, or? And all of our lots are either residential lots, or we have a few commercial lots, and we have a few residential lots that have been approved for special business uses.
Business or personal purposes, yeah, or uses. Used for either, we can't say used, used.
Yeah, so I mean, that is kind of what it says now, is used for either business or personal reasons, but.
We can tie this a little more closely to the uses that are explicitly permitted in the code.
Yeah, we can, we can massage this between now and second reading.
Yep, okay.
The next one, seven point four, is one I had alluded to earlier, where the current code references a term of 90 days, 90 consecutive days for short-term rental, where other portions of the code are 30 days, and so this would eliminate the 90-day reference and insert the 30-day reference for consistency within the code. All right. This is, now moving on to council bill three, so this is now chapter 17. The first one in this is to amend the definition for the master plan, essentially to take out the reference, the specific reference to 2008, so that every time we update the master plan, we don't also have to update this section of code. The next series of slides and, and information in your packet is the sister portion of the notification. This is, as I mentioned, currently all of the notification requirements for subdivisions are in chapter 17. This would clean up and clarify the code so that it would align with whatever changes we make to chapter 16. So again, we may have to massage some of this based on the publication discussion and bring, bring forward some options, but this is really intended to highlight that these are the sections of code that would be amended as part of this council bill.
Well, basically, you're just striking the whole section and referencing section 16, so.
For the most part, that's correct.
Yeah, so that can.
Yeah.
Probably stay as long as we actually make the changes.
Right. So I'll move to chapter 18 in council bill four, unless there are questions on anything in 17. Nope, okay. So the one and only amendment in council bill four is related to chapter 18. As council is probably aware, the city has a provision that says if you're constructing a new home or making certain modifications to an existing home, you have to have a neighborhood input meeting, invite your neighbors, tell them what you're doing, have a conversation with them. Pre-COVID, those were all done in person here at city hall. During the pandemic, we went to all virtual for those meetings, and the attendance and the participation in the virtual format were actually much better than they were in person, but the code didn't give us the specific authority to hold those virtually or in person, so this amendment would allow for us to do either of those options, but it would not allow for a combined virtual and in-person, and the discretion for who makes the decision as to whether it's virtual or in-person is the director. So no change to having it, it's just the format in which we have it, and giving us explicit authority to do it virtually. And then council bill five, I believe this to be a typo in the section where it references the director executing an escrow agreement in the form approved by the city attorney. The director's not responsible for executing that, it's the applicant for the land use application that would be responsible for that, and so this is just a correction to that language. All right. We're there, we made it. As I mentioned earlier, in December, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed these proposed amendments and voted unanimously to recommend approval, with three modifications reflected in this presentation and the staff memo and these ordinances. The reference to the discussion in the Planning and Zoning Commission paragraph in your packets referenced, was incorrect, incorrectly referenced those changes to these specific ones, but they were all pretty minor. The first one was, there was a typo where an A was missed in front of single family for one of the short-term rental discussions. Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to add the language currently adopted version of the, of the master plan, which is the update in chapter 17, and then they wanted us to take a real close look at the notification language updates and make sure that, because we were taking it out of one chapter and putting it in a different chapter, they really wanted us to make sure that the references were accurate. And so we did that, I know Kathy and her team did that, and so we believe those to be true and accurate.
So did we then conclude that the only changes that we're all talking about are in chapter 16?
Yeah, bill, council bill two is the only ones that I think are changed. So we can, we can proceed then with the motion, unless there's any further discussion about, thank you very much for the presentation, that was very helpful.
That was a great discussion, I truly enjoyed it.
Any further discussion?
I was gonna, I'll start with.
Yeah, you can start, let's do, let's do one, three, or, yeah, do them in order.
Three is contingent upon two, I'll do one, four, and five, and then we'll come back to two and three. Because three only works if we actually make the changes to two. Okay.
There's one other amendment in chapter 17 that wouldn't be reliant on.
Okay, the first one, yeah.
It's the reference to the definition for the master plan.
Okay.
I move to approve on first reading, council bill one, series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article Six of Chapter Two of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Now, to go roll call?
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, now move on to council bill two, and the way I have it is that the proposed amendment number three will be deleted from. amendment number 3 will be deleted from going forward in this motion. And number 5, proposal meant on publication, will be, go forward, but staff was going to present additional, some options for that.
Yeah, okay, so here's what I have for this. Okay. I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 2, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Articles 2, 3, 7, and 9 of Chapter 16 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's zoning regulations with the following changes. Amendment number 1, the staff will provide additional information about other types of animals in the village. Amendment number 3 will be tabled for further policy discussions. Amendment number 5 will proceed but with some changes to the publication notice type and consideration of the distance from the subject property that, for which notice is Amendment 7.3, staff will consider clarification of the language of the definition of principal structure. And that's it.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, Laura.
Counselor Savavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes, now next, Council Bill 3.
I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 3, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Articles 2 and 3 of Chapter 17 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's subdivision regulations.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion about Council Bill 3? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Savavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 4, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning construction permit pre-application neighborhood meetings.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Savavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 5, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 20 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning escrow for consultant review fees.
Second.
Motion a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Savavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that passes unanimously, well, thank you for all your work, thanks to the staff and everybody's comments, this is very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is currently scheduled for second reading on January 18th. Given, we don't want to rush through the work that we'll want to do before the next reading, we'll probably bump that back to the February 1st meeting.
That's great, there's no rush on these amendments to the code, there's no urgency, so that's terrific. Okay, that's the end of new business. You know, at this time, let me take up one new business because it has to do with our next meeting, which you just mentioned, which I will entertain now, in addition, a motion have, to have our next meeting by Zoom, given the developments in COVID and cases, and also ask that staff, probably doesn't need a motion, but ask staff if they could bring amendments to our rules of procedure to allow the, the use of Zoom at the discretion of the director or the mayor or however, there's some thoughtful process about how we could do that in our rules that allow us to do that, if needed, particularly to have a quorum present. I'll take a motion to have it, next meeting by Zoom.
I move to, make a motion to have our next meeting via Zoom.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, thank you, we'll do that by Zoom and notice it for a Zoom meeting. I think if there's nothing more than I'll move in, for the business here, I'll move into the Cherry Hills Village Charlestown Park 3 filing. So we're going to recess the city council meeting at this point, it is 7:55, and we will call to order a meeting of the board of the Cherry Hills Village Charlestown Park 3 filing general improvement district. Laura, could we have a roll call of members?
Board Member Savavi?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Glad to be here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Board Member Gallagher?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
All right, first item on the, is a consent agenda, does anybody wish to?
We'll remove item 12A for Counselor Blum and myself.
Okay. Then could I have a motion on 12B and C?
I move to approve consent, agenda items B and C. Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. We've withdrawn approval minutes for December 8th, and we want to just make a record that Counselor Blum and Counselor Brown are not in attendance at that meeting, so.
We will abstain, both of us will abstain.
And so we'll be voting, and I'll take a motion to approve 12A, the minutes.
So moved.
Second? Oh, I'll second it, I can second it now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that is approved. No unfinished business, and nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Meeting back in, reconvening now at 7:58, the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council, reports. I don't have a lot of reports, there hasn't been much going on, basically, everybody's been on vacation in the cities and the mayors, but obviously, I did have a call with Metro Mayor's Caucus about this fire, which was obviously on the minds of everybody, and all the mayors are very concerned, that was the mayor of Superior and mayor of Lewisville, all very difficult situations now, and we've, all the mayors have offered help any way they can. I guess their comments were, basically, they can't, they can't use supplies or things like that, they just need money, and I know that a lot of money has already been raised, it's very encouraging how much, how much has already been done, but it's, you know, hearts go out to, to all those citizens, I'm sure all of us have friends and neighbors who are affected by it in some way or another, and it's just, it was a real tragedy. I did want to comment on the police, on, and I think the city manager will talk about this. It's okay, I want the city manager to say something about the, the status of the police interview process, and I would like to say that Counselor Savavi has indicated he would like to be part of that, if there's others on the council who really want to be part of that, we're limited to two council members, we can't have three because it would be a meeting, let me know or let us know tonight or whenever, I'd be happy to do it, but if there's somebody who really, really wants to, to be and dedicate the time to that process, it's going to involve some meetings and obviously interviewing the candidates and things like that, so let me know, let us know now or soon as that goes, and we'll let the city manager, if, if no one else does it, I'm happy to, to step in and work with Counselor Savavi, if, if no one else has a burning desire to do that. Finally, just an update on the police foundation, because I know Jennifer understands that, I think they're up to $100,000, which is quite astounding, and for Counselor, for former council member Griffin who's spearheading that, thank you very much for doing that, and that's just a great support. I, I wasn't, I never doubted the support of our community for that, and I think that's just the beginning, I'm sure there's going to be more, and I think that's going to be a terrific, terrific asset to our community, so thank you for everybody who's worked on that, and thank you Jennifer, too, for all you've done in helping the community. All right, that's my report. Oh, we do have an executive session later, but we'll go to that, that's my report.
Quick report, I brought this issue up the other day with the city manager about knowing how we end up with, we will end up, or we have already ended up with a major surplus for the year, that what is the possibility of setting aside a certain amount of funds as a bonus type situation that can be used maybe mid-year or whatever to compensate our employees for the service they've had over the last year? And Daudenoff, Chris, if you got a discussion with Jessica about that, or the possibilities, or is that something we need to discuss as a council as a whole?
Yeah, I, I did have a chance to, to review that with Jessica, and, you know, the surplus that, that Counselor Blum is referencing, you know, there's obviously a surplus by definition, just, obviously, council as a reminder, that surplus is often then used to help fund the capital fund the following year to, to keep that, you know, going. I will say, you know, from a staff perspective, the bonus would make more sense if it's sort of coming indirectly from the capital fund, since those are considered one-time fees in a way, as opposed to any kind of pay increase from the capital fund, so that would be more consistent, I think, from a budgetary perspective. The, the surplus that we had in 2021, it was definitely on the higher side, but it was not the highest we've had of all time. There's a couple different ways, if council were interested in doing this, we could do a flat fee for employees, just regardless of your pay salary, you could get just a set amount, or you could do it by percentage, I think that the, the flat rate is probably more common. Just as a, by way of example, a $1,000 bonus for every employee would be a $53,000 total number. A 1.5% bonus if you based it on the salary, again, I don't know if I would recommend that approach, but that would be a $71,000 budget expenditure. I would also recommend maybe a mid-year, just to ensure that, you know, we don't know what might come over the next six months, maybe checking in at, at the mid-year before, as opposed to making a final decision tonight, making sure that that budget number looks good, and it could even go, we could even increase it perhaps, or decrease it based on where we are with our actuals at a mid-year, but I, is there, are there, would the surplus have enough? Yes, just keep in mind how the surplus has been used in practice over time, would be my only statement.
Should we, would we look to the city manager to come back to us with a recommendation on this, and then we discuss as a council?
We can do that, we can ask the city manager to do that, that's probably the best way to do it, we can talk among ourselves and have the city manager make some recommendations, but I, I think a half-year look back is probably a good idea, I mean, that's, that's commonly done, that's kind of a nice time to do it, we can always do supplemental appropriation, so.
That was it.
Yeah. I just.
Yes.
But we'll be providing some legal advice specifically on how to structure those bonuses to the best advantage of the city and in compliance with federal law.
Yep.
No report, I'm hoping Jay, maybe you could give us an update on the undergrounding of the Quincy power lines, either now or during your report, are you looking around like, which, which Jay are you talking about?
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Oh, city manager?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let the directors give their undergrounding report, I mean, their director report first.
Well, we, we hope the project will get started by 2023. They continue to move forward out there at a very slow pace, but they are starting to pull the wires. Soon as all those wires are pulled, they have a few more bores to go, just to finish up the last few little hookups. We actually had to stop them the other day because they didn't have any traffic control, so we kicked them off ourselves, but we're trying not to do that, so we hope here, it didn't make it by the end of the year like I had hoped, but if we get some good weather here in January, we should have the poles gone in the next month or two. It's, it's been a struggle.
Other reports, directors, chief?
I just have one quick report, Officer Cory Sack has tendered his resignation, he is one of the two that you will see in the report for next month, his last day will be mid-February, it's either the 16th or the 18th, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me, but I thought, due to the circumstances that happened back in August of 2018, that you would want to know that, so we'll have a going away for him, we'll also have a pending ceremony for one of our new officers here at the end of the month, and I always let you all know when those are going on, but just as an FYI, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, city manager?
Yes, I have a.
Or city clerk?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, you go first.
Just a reminder that recreation reimbursements for 2021 are due by January 15th of 2022, and that we are accepting tree, trees for, tree recycling, excuse me, over here at John Main Park through February 2nd, I believe it is.
Council might recall that I had provided an update regarding the public affairs consultants, and specifically regarding the next step, which would involve telephone and text surveys to our residents. That is scheduled to start tomorrow, so you might hear back from residents as early as tomorrow. I did receive one item of clarification, and I attached it to the wrong response to an email to city council, so I apologize for that confusion, but that is scheduled to start tomorrow, so that process is continuing to move right along, we are doing that in hopes of having final results for the council retreat February 1st, assuming we still have a council retreat February 1st, that's foreshadowing, is what you call that. The police chief recruitment, the mayor already mentioned, one of the two items I had related to that, which is the two council reps for the community panel. Counselor Savavi has asked to be one of those spots, so we would just need confirmation of both of those spots and who they might be, you don't necessarily have to decide that tonight, but January 18th would, we would definitely want to know later than then for both of your representatives. The other part of this element is that, you know, the contract was approved by you tonight in consent, we have had the fortune of being able to work with our consultant before tonight, they didn't just sort of wait until the contract was signed. As a result, we will have the posting hit the street tomorrow, so here we go, we're off and running, so you could expect in, in early February that the, the process will really start to take shape, and, you know, the finalist interviews are scheduled to be in, in late February, so perhaps early March, but we're shooting for late February, so at that point, we are still targeting to have the three panels, a community panel, a public safety or police chief panel, and then a staff panel. We also have an opportunity for other forms of exercises for these applicants to do to ensure that they are able to meet a variety of different scenarios where they can perform various tasks, so it's going to be a thorough process, and, you know, I think it's going to be one that, that fits this community, so.
When are those due back, what's it going to say for?
Oh, the date, I don't.
Mid-January, I guess, right?
I'm not sure, the, the deadline for submitting your application?
Yeah, for them.
No, it's, it's, yeah, I think we're giving a full four weeks.
Full four weeks?
Yes.
And are those, under the new rulings, those are not public documents, records now or not for those?
Application?
Yeah, or, do you know?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, that's not something I've worked through.
Okay.
But that would be new though, right? I mean.
Oh, the final, you remember the.
Yeah, well, that was for the city manager, though. Yeah.
And so.
Oh, wait.
Let's see how this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Did the consultant have any thoughts about whether we think we're going to see more kind of regional candidates, or even people from abroad, or did they have any?
They, they fully expect us to, to receive some national applications.
Wow, okay.
But, given the climate, and given the attractiveness of, of this position, and this community, and, and really the, the reputation that this department has, no thanks to people in this room, they expected us to receive more local applications, just because more local folks are going to know the value of this position, so they expect us to receive national applications, but I think they project there to be more local, qualified interests.
It'll be interesting to see.
So anyway, if you do have interest in that, in that other position, please let me know, or talks amongst yourselves, or however you want to decide that, but if we can just get both representatives by the 18th, that would be great. Moving on to our next fun topic, I am just a ball of joy today, COVID, we have, as you are aware, the Omicron variant is hitting all sectors of society, and local government is no exception. the Omicron variant is hitting all sectors of society, and local government is no exception. I will be finding out Thursday a lot more about how some of our neighbors are handling this. We did just take action earlier tonight regarding public meetings, or at least this public meeting. My suspicion is that we would likely have electronic meetings for at least the next two and maybe three, and then we'll have to play it by ear, depending on where the numbers are. You know, as far as City Hall goes, my goal is to keep City Hall open. That, that is our default. But I do think that if we get the, if we get enough people out and enough folks who have maybe kids whose schools are now closed or daycares are closed, you know, we may run low on numbers here, we may need to have sort of a virtual opening, if you will, where folks can still conduct any business they want, but they may need to call or email as opposed to walking in the physical doors. That also, though, relates to our retreat, which is currently scheduled for February first. I think you all got an invitation for that just earlier today, and now I'm going to talk to you about, maybe that's not the right day, only because of Omicron. I don't think we need to make that decision today, but as we get closer, just keep in mind, if, if it's a much bigger reality than we're dealing with today, we might need to either have that virtual or maybe push it back sometime. I'm hesitant to push it back too much, considering the opportunity for an election in November. Finally, boards and commissions, given the fact that you're going to be operating virtually for at least the short term, I'm, I'm assuming, consistent with what we did last time, boards and commissions should be operating the same way. Correct? Yes. I think that makes all the sense in the world. So, starting tonight, well, do you, is there one schedule that you're concerned about?
No, I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I think starting tonight. I, I think it's easy enough for P and Z, which will be the next one, we can just pivot on that pretty quickly.
Okay, city attorney, any? Well, then, I will entertain a motion, move an executive session, and, and with the motion saying that it will be adjourned immediately upon it, so everybody can go home.
I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F for the purpose of discussing personnel matters related to compensation of the city manager in relation to his performance, and upon conclusion, immediately adjourned.
Second.
Roll call, or second, motion, second, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Savavi? Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Good night, see you next time.